Welcome, everybody. This is a regular Board of Health meeting.
It is special because it's not on Thursday. Regular meetings on Thursday.
Oh, okay. So a special meeting at prime time located at 10:59 Somerset Avenue, Wednesday, April 12th at 5:32. This is also a remote participation Zoom meeting. Public meeting being recorded from cable broadcasts and internet posting on YouTube and Town of Detroit.
Patrick McGovern here.
United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God in the visible liberty of the Constitution.
Inspector reports. Town members like to listen report?
Yes. So I have a couple of things to report on this month. I continue to contribute to the strawberry dye. If for anyone that doesn't know, this is the Council on Aging paper that goes out. April's column topic was seasonal allergies. I continue to hold a blood pressure clinic at prime time. It's every third Tuesday of the month. This month is the 18th that it's going to be held. It's going to be held at 10:00 AM, but going forward, we will be changing the time to 9:00 AM. If anyone's looking for a spot, they call the Council on Aging through the server. An update on the public health excellence grant that we've been working on. As I mentioned last month, we reopened the job posting for that shared service coordinator position because we had another applicant that was interested. That gave us two applicants to interview. We did that over the last two weeks. I was part of the interviewing committee. We met yesterday and we will send our offer letter to the chosen applicant. I can't really go further into it yet because they haven't received their letter in acceptance yet. So we'll see how that goes. I do encourage the board to start thinking about as we get closer to actually having a shared coordinator who's actually going to start hopefully putting some kind of surfaces for us to cherry pick out of what we are looking to get out of this. We did complete the capacity study, which brought some information to the state and to our shared coordinator of what the town's lacking. But I mean, as Todd knows, he completed that capacity study. It was very time consuming. I don't even know if we got all the information in. A lot of towns didn't. So they might be missing areas that we might be struggling in that we can better let them know what we're looking for. Because what this shared coordinator is going to do is look at those capacity studies, look at what they tell us and build some kind of team that we can say, hey, we're like we were having that drought when we had all these perks that needed to be done. Hey, Dayton's struggling. We need somebody to come do perks. We can pick from that pool of whoever they're going to have in that. So we'll see how that goes. This has been very slow moving as we know. I think we've been involved in this in almost two years and we're just getting to the point that we're possibly going to do something. But I think that the applicant that we went with, I think that we're going to be very happy with what they can do for the whole amount of towns that are involved in this. I wanted to remind residents to be mindful it is tick season. Ticks are always out and we do for what I think we have a lot of line in Dayton. I don't know in comparison to other towns, but I'm constantly getting it on Maven. So I am looking to hopefully create some kind of informational session for residents on ticks and tick-borne illnesses, just to kind of get awareness out there. I continue to work on the healing community study. This is that opioid study that I've been working on with Berkeley and Freetown. We will be attending our first event in Dayton, the Touch a Truck event in May. We'll be there with a table providing residents with information on resources on opioid addiction. I also met with Carrie yesterday. She's our point person in Dayton for this study. She supplied me with some Narcan that can be given to residents if they have any concerns for themselves or family members. Residents don't really have to seek me out if they do want Narcan and they need it quickly for some reason, because in Massachusetts you can't obtain it from the pharmacy. You don't need a doctor's order. Mass has a state law standing where for these. But I do now have five if any residents are looking for that. And they are also looking for any businesses in town that would be interested in having Narcan boxes in their business. This would be paid through the study. It looks kind of like this. And it's just like, it's kind of like those boxes that have the AEDs in them or the Stop the Bleed type thing, except this would have Narcan in it and it has something if you were going to do CPR. So that's in case anyone's interested in that. And lastly, I did just, going back to Stop the Bleed, I just went to a training for that. I am a trainer now for Stop the Bleed and I'm looking into ways that I can use this to help the town. I have some ideas. I don't want to say them until I actually see if they can help. So that's all I have.
Ironically, ironically, if you do do one of those events, I have a bleeding control kit in my garage.
Oh, do you?
With all the tourniquets, all the arms.
Do you have an arm?
If you need it, you can use it. They're not cheap.
The arms are expensive.
Yeah, they're not cheap.
No.
I have the whole like Pelican case full of stuff.
Okay, that's great because that was the one thing that was holding me back. I was like, who can I go do? It's going to buy me an arm.
You guys borrow it anytime you need.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, that's all I have.
All set? Any questions? All right. Tom?
It's been sluggish with the perks. So I've been making some headway in some of the stuff that's been hanging around in the office for a while, trying to deal with some of that backlog, obviously working with Elizabeth to try and get some things up to speed, shall we say. We're starting to see subjects starting to go in now. There's been a lot where we haven't done any, but it's starting up again. We're starting to see some perk tests, but not a lot. But otherwise, making some headway.
Good evening, everyone. I just have one thing tonight. Nancy and I have seen some of the busiest permits and mills in quite some time over the last 10 days. So if that's any indication on what the economy is going to be like or the spring's going to be like, it's enlightening. Well, permit count last year was consistent, but it was down by I think about 4%. It was still close to 1,000, but it was just a little bit less than the prior year. So to see this inundation with permits is a welcoming sign. So usually it's not a wonderful one with the health department, but usually when my office sees that, Mason Mills has some trickle down to your office, so.
Is this like renovations, new building additions? Is it all the above kind of?
A little bit of everything. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay. Did you talk to Stacy?
No, I never go to both of them.
Okay, I did. She was hoping to have those regulations that she was talking about for us tonight, but obviously the ag commission is the one, agricultural commission is the one working on that. So say again, she was hoping to have them for tonight, but apparently she doesn't. She's not here.
Oh, she's not coming?
She said she was hoping to be here with those ranks, but I guess they don't have them. So do you want to table it in case she does come?
Yeah, we can do it.
In case she went to the wrong building or something.
Do you want to make a motion to table it till the end?
Yeah, we can table it till the end. Revisit it.
All right. Can I get a motion to jump to new business so that we can accept the calls with resignation? Just AV and C.
Yeah, I make a motion to go out of order.
Okay, I'll step down a second, Tim. So, okay, A, the acceptance of the resignation of Nicole Mello as the Board of Health Chair. I have a motion to.
I'll accept the letter as stated for the resignation of Nicole Mello as Board of Health Chair.
I'll step down and second it. I get a motion on restructuring of the Board of Health numbers for who's going to be the chair until we can fill the other position.
Do we need to, we seconded it, but we need to vote on it?
Oh, yes. You get a vote?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now then. You want to make a motion on restructuring of Board Health numbers?
Sure, what are we, like what, what are we doing with it?
Decide who's going to be the chairman until we can get the third number in place.
Yeah, do you have any discussion on it?
No.
Do you have any thoughts on it?
I'll take the position if you want.
Okay, that's fine.
We can put the coin over it.
No, that's fine. That's fine. So do you want to make a vote on that?
All right, make the motion.
So we'll make a motion to appoint you as chairperson for the time being until we fill the board.
Okay, I'll step down a second. Will you give a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Along the restructuring of that Board of Health discussion though, I wanted to add to that is the fact that we do have a vacancy. And seeing that we do have a vacancy, I have seen we, there's been way too much turnover with the Board of Health and we're finally gaining some ground. So I, my feeling is posting the position to be filled currently, I don't think is beneficial to the Board of Health. I think we have our feet running. I think things are going okay. I think things are going in the progress in the right direction. I think we have a couple more hurdles in front of us with the budget coming up and with everything coming up. So I want to make a motion that we table posting the vacant position for the time being, at least till the next meeting.
Okay. I'll second that motion. You give a vote?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now, C. Disclosed by special vinted valley employees of financial interest, this valley position Nicole Mello of public health.
So do you want to speak on that?
Yeah, I have the form for that. I didn't send it to you guys yet because I was waiting for Mike to look it over to tell me if I even filled it out correctly. And when I'm filling it out, it doesn't even feel like it needs, like it should be going to you guys. It feels like it should be going to the Board of Selectmen.
I agree.
So I don't know. I put it on there just to, you know, cover all my bases. I will send you the form once it's completed and I feel like I actually completed it correctly because I thought it would be easier to fill up this time because it's my second time, but apparently it's not.
I agree. I don't think that it's up to us, we didn't make a recommendation.
Yeah, no.
To the selectmen. And I'm selecting.
Correct. Yeah, I filled out one of those also.
Okay. Into the selectmen, okay. I couldn't get an answer. And I was like, and go ahead, everyone.
Can I get a motion that we approve that, approved to recommend?
Well, so we need to make a temporary motion to.
Recommend the selectmen that we want to keep open us.
Right, but if the conflict paperwork's not completed, it's not an official appointment yet, correct? So we will just have to vote to agree to keep you on board until the selectmen approve it.
That's my understanding.
Yeah, so I mean, I'll make a motion to, you know, keep Nicole on as the town nurse pending the town Board of Selectmen's final say. But we can revisit it when all that's done, if we have to.
And I'll keep you up to date on that as soon as I get all my stuff.
I'll second. You give a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for taking that out of order. All right, have a good night, you guys.
Jim, make something.
Yeah.
Tom and Nicole, I just wanted to say thank you for all your time on the board and good luck as a selectman.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate it. All right, I'll be seeing you guys.
We have used on the board selectmen.
Of course, yeah, it's one of them we can use.
I don't know Karen's number.
Leanne set it up for us here, so.
They're going to start their meeting at 6:30. It's going to kick us out.
At 6:30, so.
We're going to be.
Sweet, looks like we have.
Yeah.
We have the 6:30.
We have 45 minutes.
Forty-four minutes, let's go. Go on.
All right, let's go. All right. We'll jump back to the old business. Health agent, job description, do you have anything, Patrick?
No, I actually, I wanted to send this to Elizabeth to be printed off. I did send a draft to Todd and administrative Mullen as well as you, if you had a chance to read it over. Just, I apologize, I didn't bring it. I took stuff that you gave me, Todd, and kind of revised it into into a, just a job description that kind of applied, taking the points that you had recommended. I did some research based on other towns surrounding us of what their health agent had and things that thought might work. So let me know if there are any edits to that. I'll touch base. I reached out to the town administrator the other day. He said he hadn't gotten to it yet. The Board of Selectmen did want it by our joint meeting at the end of the month. So I'll have to send out another draft for everybody just to kind of review. It's been discussed, it's been voted on amongst us as a group, so I don't think that it needs to be voted on to move it forward because it's just a stock then reviewing it. It's not implementing it yet. So we'll leave it at that and I'll get that out to everybody as soon as I hear back from Mike.
So you want to make a motion to table it?
Yeah, we'll table it for now. I'll send out a draft to everybody. I wanted to send that out today.
Okay. So we're going to make a motion?
Yeah, make a motion and table that till next month.
I'll second the vote.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Board of Health Restructuring Health.
We've gone over that.
What's up?
We discussed that, didn't we?
No, that was just the minutes.
That was the you guys.
Yeah, so that, I mean, we can pass over. We did discuss that with the whole, the restructuring efforts. So the restructuring effort that I want to discuss tonight was talking about filling that vacant spot, which we touched upon in new business. So I'm not sure you have anything else to add to that?
No, I don't. Should we take it off or should we table it or just?
Just a motion.
Just, yeah, it's, yeah, there's no motion for it because we already discussed it. Does anybody else have anything to add to that?
All right, next, 2022 Annual Town Report. We've all seen it's been submitted, Jim?
I submitted it to Leanne and it was already approved, so.
Okay.
That happened last Wednesday.
So do we need to vote on that or that's already done?
Nope, already done. Thank you. Big thank you to Elizabeth for helping me out with that.
You will.
I kind of got balled down.
No worries, they got you.
Okay, use of third party consultant circulation tests in septic plants reviews. Do we have anybody in place yet that we currently isn't?
We have a third party that fills in for inspections, but not for perk tests and septic plant reviews.
How has that been going, like a month wise? You said it was down anyways, right?
Yeah, it's down. It hasn't been a need. It's manageable at this point. It's, you know, whatever, one a week, which is manageable.
Yeah, I think the discussion was just to kind of touch upon it to make sure that you weren't getting overwhelmed and that you have the ability to use that if needed.
Right, we just want to make sure that we have someone in place.
I mean, don't get me wrong, there's going to come a day because then August and September or whatever, I did like 41 new lots for new construction and only two of the plans have come in so far. So there's still a long way to go.
We're about vacation time.
Right.
I don't need a vacation, thanks, Jim.
Well, I don't schedule perks for the week of one vacation, so it's only been for inspections and septic plant reviews would just wait the four days till I get back. So that's, that's how we'd set it up before. So it was only for inspections that the.
Sort of a backlog. We don't want a backlog of the four days.
Sure, but I'm saying that's how it's currently set up. That's, that's what I'm saying is that it was only for inspections because the board previously had felt that the perk tests and septic plant reviews, we could schedule around those.
Is there a historic week that you take off?
The last week in July.
Jim, Jim?
This is just a suggestion because I know how things work in government. It might be wise to get something in place with someone. That way here we already have a mechanism in case the need arises.
Well, that's what I was thinking.
Whereas if you wait until the need arises, now we're behind the eight ball. So I think just purely my suggestion, if you put a system in place or reach out to someone who may be interested in this, and then we can at least have a, someone on call, so to speak. If the need arises, we can, we can deal with it.
Do you have a plan for us to find these people?
I can present one to you, sure, if you're asking me to, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you have anyone that you, any people you've dealt with in the past or people that you wouldn't?
I mean, the review for all the towns because mostly engineers we work with here are just doing work in town, so that I don't say precludes them from working in town, but usually there's people that do reviews that are separate. There are a couple that we work with.
Does Jim, does that have any conflict? Somebody that designed a system for the town? Can they also review other people's plans?
They can, they just can't review their own plans.
Okay.
Right. But I think if I were to present something to you, then I would probably find someone who specializes in doing plan reviews for municipalities, not an engineer who does main focuses designing septics, and this would be a side thing. It would really be someone who does plan reviews. That's already familiar with the process.
Any other discussion? So can I get a motion that we, that Jim gets the list together when we get working on trying to put some people in place?
Yeah, and if, Todd, if you have a list or anything as well to present at that time.
I think Todd and I can collaborate together on it.
Okay.
We've both been in the business a long time, so. So is that all right, Todd?
Yeah, I'm just, it's rolling through my head on like which towns have upside consultants, so.
Okay.
Sounds good.
That's a motion?
Yes.
I'll second it. Vote?
Aye.
Aye. All right, D. Change regular meeting date to the second Wednesday of every month. Any motion on that?
Oh, I just want to say, I know this is the same night as the selectman on the second Wednesday and obviously we're running into it tonight with 5:30 to 6:30. Could we start at 5:00 or 4:30 and that gives us a little more buffer in between us. I know our office is technically open till 5:30, but I'm just throwing it out there just because obviously if we only have a one hour window.
I know, sorry. Go ahead.
No, that was it.
Okay. So we'll, I mean, I know we had discussed moving it away from Thursdays so we can have a better time of flexing things. I, I don't know if Wednesdays are going to work. I was kind of waiting to see where my schedule is going to fall, which I won't know until actually Thursday. So I won't know till this Thursday, so I have nothing to kind of base it off of.
Okay.
The way my schedule should be working, we may even be able to do like Tuesdays at 4:30 in the afternoon and not worrying about flexing time, if that works. Or I know we had discussed Mondays, so do we want to keep it on a night that the Board of Selectmen are on where, you know, if we need people like Jim to come or if we need people like Mike to come or it's going to overlap meetings or overlap issues or that's my only concern with Wednesdays is.
And I don't want to leave Nancy alone if we both take off.
Yeah, I don't think leaving the office empty is a good idea.
Yeah.
I, I like the idea of Wednesdays. If it's a conflict for your schedule, then certainly we need to, we need to consider that.
That's right.
I'm not being selfish because I consider myself dedicated, but sometimes I'll be here three nights a week. And if we can consolidate and I can know, I'll go back to the time when I used to be here just one day a week, one night a week rather, it would be great. But if we.
I mean, I'm all, we had discussed like a Monday or Tuesday and then it kind of got tabled because I didn't know what my schedule is going to be. I don't mind it, whatever works best. I agree that I don't think we should leave Nancy in there. I don't think, it's the same discussion that we came up with, taking notes for storm waters. We don't want, we don't want an issue with two people out of the office at the same time, which I definitely agree on. I want to move it earlier in the week because I think it's fair to flex everybody's time and we just have a heads up of.
And I think the Thursday for lots of reasons should be changed, but you know, it's the end of the work week for people who are four 10-hour days or four nine and a half hour days, whatever it is. And when the weather starts getting nice, although we're all dedicated, it would be nice to leave here on a Thursday afternoon and our time, so.
Right.
Some of us do get calls in the middle of the night, so you know. That said, I think moving it to a Tuesday or a Wednesday, at least from my perspective, would be, would be good. But we certainly don't want people stressing again here or conflicts with work, et cetera, et cetera, so.
Right.
We could table it and then once you've byed out your schedule, then we can readjust our schedule for next.
Well, I mean, I'm okay. Can, do we have to set, can we just say next month we'll be at 5:30 on a Wednesday?
Well, again, right now the regular meeting is the Thursday. That's why this was posted as a special, so we can just do the same thing next month and just post it as a special.
Let's just do that till we can keep it on a Wednesday so you guys can plan your time. We could do it at 5:30, so if the office is closed, we'll plan it for a special meeting for next month on a Wednesday. And then by then I'll know exactly and we'll, we'll set a final decision. So we'll table the idea of moving it permanently till next month and we'll plan next month's special meeting for a Wednesday at 5:30, if that makes sense and that's okay.
It does, but I think it may change when you get your third member too.
And. Yeah, okay, so we'll take that motion. So we're going to make the motion to, you're making a motion to, the next meeting will be on Wednesday, but if your plans change, we can always move it.
No, well, so we're just table the idea of moving the meeting. So just table that and then next month we'll do a special meeting on the Wednesday.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll have a discussion on moving it.
So we'll move that, that'll be part of the same motion?
Yeah.
Okay. I second.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we've got a request for the Taunton Area Vietnam Veterans Association for temporary food permit fee waiver. Any discussion?
I, no, I just got everything tonight, so.
This is a organization that does car shows every year. They do a few every summer and historically the Board has granted the waiver because they are nonprofit and.
Veterans.
Okay, yeah, then I'll make a motion to approve the.
The waiver.
The waiver for the Taunton Area Veterans Association's food fee waiver.
I'll second.
Aye.
Aye. And then the, the Dayton Lions, they're also requesting a waiver for all upcoming events.
They have a lot of events through the year between the chicken barbecue and the cow chip and all that, but this is only for them. So the cow chip and there's a bunch of vendors in here, like the popcorn people and cotton candy, those people pay their fees. This is only for the Lions for what they're serving at their events.
Okay, and historically this has just been, we've approved it, okay.
Given the nature of the entity, the testing.
No, that's right. All right, then make a motion to waive the fees for the Dayton Lion Club for all their upcoming events.
I'll second.
Aye.
Aye. Schedule. About today, don't pick up.
Getting a lot of calls for that. I want to know when it's going to be.
I'm reclining on One Even Street.
So historically it's always done right around Memorial Day, week before, after, whatever. There are several things to consider for this year. First off is we have Memorial Day on May 29th. And then we have annual town meeting is on June 5th. Did we have confirmation on that date yet?
I'm sorry?
Annual town meeting, June 5th?
It is not confirmed, but it, that seems to be the date, yes.
And then Juneteenth is June 19th. So out of solid waste, it was kicked around that they would probably prefer to have it a little later, like after Memorial Day, but what happens if we get it out of the message boards and that kind of thing? But the message boards are going to be used for annual town meeting. So that kind of precludes us from using it the week of Memorial Day. We basically need, the week of the event has to be a full week. We can't do it the week of a holiday because it's just too much effort.
Who do we have to schedule this with?
With us.
No, but I mean, who's going to actually do the pickups?
Oh, the highway department. And we checked with them already to find out if there was something going on, like he's paving a road or whatever, and he said right now there's nothing in the way, so.
So they're available at any time? So.
Oh, so they follow the trash schedule type thing and they go?
Yes, it's the same day as your regular.
Okay, now I get it.
And Elizabeth and I are schedules because obviously we both need to be here for those two weeks because it's a lot of phone calls, unless Jim wants to do it. So, yeah, that's our, our choices. So if annual town meetings on June 5th and we change the signs on June 6th, you'd like to have the signs out there for a week or so before you do it, but that gives us the week of Juneteenth doesn't really work, so it's getting a little dicey in the part of doing it.
Is that an actual town holiday card?
Yeah.
I know it was some town, some state, some not private.
I think it finally became a.
People are eager to get it done, so why can't we do it before?
Well, we can, that's what I'm just throwing out there because solid waste asked for after Memorial Day.
Yeah, I'm actually hearing that there's a lot of phone calls, a lot of. Yeah, I'm actually hearing that there's a lot of phone calls, a lot of inquiries, so maybe we move it up this year.
Yeah.
They're doing spring cleaning, they wanna get the stuff out of their basements.
What about the week before Memorial Day?
Oh, no, I get, I'm just, the solid waste committee said after Memorial Day was preferable.
Yeah.
So, um, but it doesn't seem to work, given the calendar.
Yeah, Juneteenth and all that shit.
Memorial Day.
That would be the twenty-second to the twenty-sixth.
That's at least a month from now, so we have time.
We got time to get it on the, thanks, because I don't think they advertise annual town meeting for more than a week and a half or so, so.
Do you guys have any vacations planned in the next month? Good, because I'm not approving.
That's perfect.
It's up to him to approve it.
So that'd be the week of May twenty-second.
Is there a particular day?
So it's the week.
Whole week.
Oh, whole week?
Monday, Friday.
Depending on where you live is where the schedule would be, with their pickups.
Okay.
So the message boards would go out at least on the seventh of May.
The probably, yeah, the eighth, because Tom will move them on the Monday, yeah.
Sure.
And then would we get it out through social media, on the town website? It's, it's a little bit of, um, the empty, and then we can tell people this. So what's gonna happen?
Was there any reason why solid waste didn't want it before Memorial Day before we?
I think they just thought it was a little early, that a lot of people clean out their garages on Memorial Day weekend, so, whatever.
Yeah, uh, the calls have been coming in, I concur with, uh, office manager, they have been coming in.
They've been getting a lot.
So the thing is, if at some point we get a decide when we're gonna start selling stickers, if it's the week of the twenty-second, we probably start on May first for selling the stickers.
Right. In motion? Sure, I make a motion that we do bulk item pickup the week of May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three.
I second.
Aye.
Aye.
Well, we'll disseminate that information to the highway department.
Yeah, usually we do, so.
You, okay.
It's not just the highway department, we gotta get it out to several people, yeah. Strawberry vine, et cetera.
Okay, uh, solid waste mailer.
So, um, out of the solid waste, um, maybe one of our members is working on a mailer, and, um, I don't know if you've got one, I know you've seen it. So he wants to get a mailer out to everybody in town, and he's coming up with language that's there. This is still in draft form, it hasn't been finalized yet, but it's basically trying to get across to everybody about the, um, pink bag program, about mattresses, uh, books, um, and basically keep your mattress clean and dry before we get it, where you can recycle objects, so it's not a bad thing. Uh, it's just a matter of how much space you have in order to get your information across, and, um, yeah, so the trust, solid waste committee would recommend this to the Board of Health that would then send it out, so I don't think it's finalized yet by solid waste, so it's just, here's the draft, so if there's something, look at it, if there's anything you want, go ahead and throw it out there.
So we're gonna table that?
Oh, uh, so we just need to read this and kind of give you our blessing on it.
It's still a draft.
Still a draft form. I mean, or you could just bless it, that whatever the solid waste comes up with, that we can kick it to the selectmen, you could do it that way too, that will save that extra step.
Yeah, I I mean.
I don't know how involved you wanna be in.
I can go off the solid waste committee's recommendations on this, if we wanna just.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that either.
They they know what they're doing, I think.
And then at some, at some point, Nicole was the representative, so.
Well, so that's, we, we, I'm gonna talk about that afterwards, that you just made me remember that. Um, yeah, so I I make a motion that that we allow the solid waste committee to finalize this and and get Board of Selectmen approval, so we can get this help, because these state requirements are already in effect, so. Um, we should get, sorry.
How are we paying for the mailer?
Uh, we should have money in the budget, right? Do we have an item line for that?
We have communications line in four thirty-three.
So you'd have to allow the expenditure of funds from that line as well.
Okay, how much is usually?
Somewhere on fifteen hundred dollars.
Okay, um. Do we, do we have, do you know what is in that budget line item currently, or do we?
Is that communication and technical?
No, it's professional, technical. No, it's communication. Uh, I don't, off the top of my.
Seeing how it's in that budget, are they gonna get prices on it?
We haven't gotten that far in the conversation yet.
Yeah, then maybe we're gonna have to probably wait until.
When are we meeting again, Todd? I I didn't make the last.
I have the numbers in my office.
Um, so it depends, like, what you're seeing here is probably gonna be paper that would be trifolded and stapled or whatever, which is different from a flyer, which is like a hard card with the laminated or whatever. Um, and again, we haven't gotten that far in the conversation yet. Uh, looks like May seventeenth at four P M, that's a Wednesday.
So we're not meeting again till the seventeenth to finalize this?
Of May.
Right.
So we wouldn't be meeting until after the seventeenth anyways.
No, your meeting's usually May tenth.
Or just before, so we may be able to come back with a more solid number and what's in the budget for that meeting. Um, but I, yeah, without, without.
I mean, if it's just the past.
I don't like abstract approvals.
Right.
You know?
If it was just the draft, then I'm fine with it, but if we don't know a number for the mailings, then we're just gonna have to to table this until we get, until they get the number. I mean, I'm okay if they I'm okay if solid waste comes up with a final draft of this and wants to present the written draft to the Board of Selectmen. And then we can approve the mailing cost as a separate vote, I'm fine with that. Um, but, I mean.
Yeah, because the selectmen don't have to approve the fund. Actually, the selectmen don't have to prove this mailer at all, that's just here.
Oh, okay, all right, then, let's just wait until solid waste can give us a number, because that's I mean, I'd say if it's, if if we knew last year was twelve hundred, I'd approve fifteen hundred for this, but.
But the number of pages is gonna play into it too, like say whether it's laminated or not, so, because right now, I think it's longer than we'd like it to be, so we have to kind of get simpler, but but this mailer is also gonna go out through, you know, Facebook and other social media, and maybe even the newspaper or whatever, we're not there yet, but.
Sorry, then just, I vote that we just table this until, uh, solid waste can come back with. Um, I'm okay with them coming back with a final draft of this. No, I don't need to proofread it, but, uh, make a motion that that, um, we wait till, we table this until solid waste can come back with actual numbers to support it.
Second.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next is, uh, recommend the appointment of David Neely as a solid waste member.
So Jonathan Lawrence was our transfer station attendant, he was on the committee, he's an all-on-brow in the committee, so we have an opening um, for a resident at Arch on this committee, and that, um, David Neely has represented an interest in being on that committee.
Is it something we need to do interviews on?
Not necessarily, no. Um, I'm not sure if any of you are familiar with Mr. Neely. I've had the pleasure of serving with him on the managers committee. He's a great resident, great individual, brings good context and discussion and debate, uh, to to the table. So I would, I would love to have him as a, as a fellow member on the board, on the committee.
And solid waste, where they stand on record, did they recommend him?
Uh, this came from, from the, I wasn't at the last meeting, Todd, but I know this came.
It did come out of the solid waste committee.
Yes, true, then I.
I didn't want him to speak.
Vote to recommend the appointment of Daily, David Neely is the solid waste member to fill the vacancy.
I'll second.
Aye.
Aye.
And I believe, um, Elizabeth already has the form pulled out to be signed, so, um, we'll move that along quicker.
Okay, then Jay, other items are recently anticipated by the chair, what are you, I was advanced, and I just realized this through the day. I'd like to have some discussion on the seven shared calendars. Would, you know, so Todd can see it, Elizabeth can see it, Jim, you, me.
Yeah, I don't think it's. Does it?
No, we already talked about this at the last meeting, we're gonna do, we just have to hook up with IT again, so.
Because I created one, an email account with all of us in it, and then when I went to hit share, it doesn't do anything, so we need the IT guy.
Get the IT guy.
It's already approved?
Yeah. Well, I don't think.
I don't think it needs to be approved.
Probably just questioning why, why couldn't we get it done?
Okay.
Yeah.
And we have money in the professional technical to pay for that, because they will charge us, okay.
It was fifty hundred dollars though.
We didn't get the vote from the last time we saw each other.
Yeah, one twenty-five, and we were at fifteen hundred, so.
Our own IT guy bills us for his services.
He's not an employee, he's a contract service.
Um.
He's expensive too.
Oh, I don't know. Um. I don't think I need to bring that up, so don't worry about that. Um, do I need to vote on that, um, that class I'm taking next Saturday, Todd?
Well, it's not a vote, you, you, the board has to vote to approve it, but it's not on the agenda.
Okay.
So you can just tell everybody you're doing it, and what's gonna happen is, at the next agenda will have it on there, and you say to be reimbursed for it, and this board will vote to reimburse you out of whatever line. Um, professional and technical or training, so I think it's training, and then, um, it'll get kicked and then they'll pay you back.
Okay, uh, so as, I mean, the board noticed that Todd sent it out, um, thank you, by the way.
Yeah, there wasn't a lot of notice on that.
No, that's fine.
No, I mean, for when we need like a two-month lead time in order to get it paid for ahead of time, it gets.
That's fine, I can, I don't, it's only a hundred dollars, I can pay it and be re, it's not a big deal, but the, um, just trying to figure out, I wanna make sure I say it right. You could probably say it better than I can. Um, Massachusetts Association of.
Health Boards?
Health Boards Conference is this Saturday in Taunton. Um, it's a full-day class, um, going over Board of Health rules, regulations, stuff like that. Um, Todd had sent it out.
Yeah, I got that, I, I'm tied up on Saturday.
I just actually happen to have a Saturday off, um, so I'm gonna attend it, so we'll figure it out.
I think they served some food and stuff there too.
Well, that's why I'm going.
So I, am I okay to call Chris to come and set that up for us?
Oh, so if we need to, yeah, if we need to spend money on it, then we need to vote on it.
Probably. It'll cost about one twenty-five.
I don't see that being a problem.
Oh, yeah, I didn't, I, we didn't need to, I thought the IT guy was one of, like a town guy, so I figured it wasn't an issue, but we're spending money, we have to vote on it.
Go ahead.
Um, I make a motion to, uh, allow Todd and Elizabeth to reach out to the IT person to set up, um, the shared calendars for the Board of Health.
I'll second.
And I.
Aye. Any public input?
No, sir.
Any respondents?
Todd, Elizabeth, you guys got anything?
We're not the public, I had agents for us.
Oh, that's true. Yeah, but your input matters, everybody's input matters.
No. Thank you.
Uh, you wanna, that we're gonna, we're gonna prove the minutes. We can do one at a time, or we can just do.
I make a motion to approve minutes from bullet points A, B, and C, as.
Usually we de-date into the, because it's, people at home don't know what you're.
Uh, I make a motion to approve the minutes for the special meeting on March ninth, the special, uh, March ninth, twenty twenty-three, the reg, special meeting on January twelfth, twenty twenty-three, and the regular meeting on January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
We're gonna do it?
Definitely, you have fifteen minutes to go. Anybody wanna talk about it?
No.
We have a motion to adjourn?
Uh, most, I make a motion to adjourn.
I'm second.
Aye.
Aye.
Now's the time.
It is now six fifteen, so we're done.
Awesome.